Good evening and welcome to the Georgetown School Committee Meeting of Thursday, April 28, 2016. If we could all please rise for our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will start off the meeting, approval of our consent agenda. The Chair will make a motion to approve regular session minutes of April 14, 2016, safety minutes of April 14, 2016, and acceptance of warrants number 42 P-16 and 43 V-16. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We don't have a student rep tonight either?
Oh.
I always like hearing that update.
Hmm.
Okay.
There is the middle school play going on right now.
That's right, it started today, right?
Romeo to go, yes, yes, and you know, the kids look all really excited.
And it's going through, do you know how long it's going through?
I don't.
It's a while, it was more than like, I think it's like a week. Do you have any idea?
I thought it was just one night.
I thought it was two, I think it's Thursday and Friday.
Really? Okay, this is why a student rep. Yeah, really beneficial.
I understood it to be one night, but I could be wrong, I...
Well, they've been practicing for a while, they put so much effort into that, and I love the fact that the older kids, like I know the freshmen, you know, that the older kids get involved to kind of mentor.
Yes, yes.
Along and like help out, so I hope that goes well.
Yeah.
Do you know of anything else going on? I know the sports are in full swing, which is great, I love seeing the schools so busy with the kids in their uniforms and the buses and things like that, so I'm sure they're gearing up ready for the end of the school year. It's going by too quick.
And next week is Teacher Appreciation Week. I was thinking of that. Wonderful and exciting, and there's a teacher appreciation luncheon scheduled at the Penbrook on May 6.
Which is Friday.
Which is Friday, and on the Facebook page is a sign-up genius that people can sign up for to help. The one for the George, the Middle High School, it will happen, it's tentatively scheduled for the 9th.
Right.
And so, as soon as we get a...
Oh, the PD Day.
Yes.
Oh, okay. So that's Monday? Monday's a half-day.
It's a half, is it, is it a full PD Day?
Oh, it's a full, it was originally gonna be a half-day, but because, because we had to make up the time.
That's the election day.
Oh, election day.
It's the election day.
Yeah, but it was supposed to be...
Oh, right.
And just a shout-out to Administrative Week for all those hard-working...
Is that this week?
Yes, it is.
Oh, wow.
Hard-working administrative people.
Yes, and the Pearlie Luncheon is May 5.
Oh, okay.
Wow, it's a busy luncheon.
And there also is a sign-up genius for that.
There is? Do you think you could like forward that to me and maybe I could put it up on the Facebook page? Okay, great. Good.
Thank you.
And that's a busy, busy week. Okay, so tonight we have Anthony Messina here with us, if you'd like to come on up. I invited Anthony to come tonight to talk about the MICA event that our kids went to like a month ago.
April 1st.
Okay. And they did so well.
Yeah, so, well, here's our plaque, first of all, they gave us a really nice plaque.
Nice.
With the school name and the dates and whatnot.
That's great. Now where will you proudly display that?
We, I have them, so the school has gone now six times total, no, five times total. And so Warren Young has graciously put up screws in the band room, and so we're gonna hang them, they're already hung across the front of the room, trying to build a legacy kind of thing for the school and their participation in that. So, for those of you who don't know, MICA is the Massachusetts Instrumental and Choral Conductors Association, they are one of a couple organizations in the state that kind of promote professional development for teachers and then put on festivals and things where students can go and compete, but it's a, it's a different than competing, you know, first place, second place kind of thing, you're competing against a standard. I think Lori included a rubric for you guys, so we're graded on several different categories, eight or nine different categories here, and we receive a grade for each category from three different judges. Unlike when you go to Six Flags or other types of festivals where you have the competition element of it, the standard that we are expected to perform at is extremely high at MICA. And they, like, you don't get gold unless you earned it, and when you earn it, you earn a spot to perform at Boston Symphony Hall.
Wow.
And so that's why that standard is set so high. So it's really, really a great event. We were judged by three, three people. One is Paul Alberta, who is a longtime director in the state of Massachusetts, he's one of the old fire and brimstone band directors from yesteryear, and the director at, from Westfield State University, and the director of orchestras from University of New Hampshire were our three judges. And so they're very high-level judges who expect excellence, and I believe we also included the score sheets for you guys to see there.
Yes, and I see a lot of...
And so we did, we did a lot of good work, still room for growth.
Superiors and excellence, almost all the way through.
Yeah, absolutely. Kids are doing a lot of really great work that we're very proud of, still room for growth, but you know, over, you know, over time, we'll get there. But we're very, very proud of them, they put in a lot of work, and this process is a little bit different for us, you know, normally we kind of, you know, December concert, we prepare the music, we go in, we perform the concert for the community and anyone who comes to our concert. In this situation, we did our March concert, which is our pre-festival concert, pre-MICA concert I call it, and we brought in Dave Rocks, who's the director of bands at Gordon College, and after we performed our three numbers, he got onstage in front of all the parents and clinicked the kids and worked with them to improve our performance. And then, we then had about another week of rehearsals, and then we went to MICA and performed in front of the three judges, and then immediately following our performance, we go into a clinic room with one of our judges, who then works with the kids in the clinic room, so it's very educational.
Lot of learning in preparation.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, a lot of hard work, and the kids, the kids talk about MICA Messina that comes out, which is a very different Messina, so, so yeah, so it's a, it's a great process, super educational, I tell the kids, this is my MCAS for band is what I call it, so, because we're, as you can see, we're like, we receive a grade, we receive lots of feedback, I also receive, each of the judge, each of the judges has a cassette tape, cassette, cassette tape, that they are, while we're performing, they're actually talking and they have copies of the music and they're providing feedback as well.
So do you let the kids hear that?
Yeah, we listen to it after.
Wow.
Yep.
They don't like, like say, oh, that one, like they don't point kids out?
No, 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 it's not, well, they don't, they don't have the kids' names anyway. They might say, you know, like trumpets, you know, watch this, or you know, oh, in this section, think about this, or do this kind of stuff, or oh, yeah, it's actually one of the judges was really hilarious, because he would be mid-sentence, and then he would hear something else and immediately divert to whatever he heard, and so like, it's just like stream of consciousness comments that there. So, it's great, but we, I clinicked the heck out of them. We had Dave Rocks on the one night, and then we had Dr. Andrew Boyzen Jr., who's the director of bands at the University of New Hampshire, came in and worked with the kids, and we were performing one of his pieces. So he actually wrote this piece that was about a high school kid who had died in a car crash, and he gave the kids a lot of like emotional perspective on the piece and some stuff that I didn't even know about it, and so that was really, really special for us. And then the Friday before, the week before, Dr. Jeff Gershman from Capital University in Columbus, Ohio, was in town with his wife, who was with the Worcester College Chorus that performed at our school, and he came in and worked with our kids as well, so they had a lot of feedback, a lot of outside ears, and it was, it was a good experience.
Wow, that's great. I remember when the superintendent was telling us about the March concert, and she attended and when the gentleman came up and critiqued them and told them what to do, and I know they've done that in the past, I don't know if it was the same gentleman, I think Ipswich.
No, it was a different, last year Jerry Dolan from Ipswich did it, yeah.
Which is really nice that they take the time to do that, but I know music is very important to them too, so you only want to see the kids', you know, interest continue, and I know, when you, you've been here how many years?
This is number four. Yeah, hard to believe, it's been four already.
And when you came here, I said, wow, he has really big shoes to fill, and you have done an amazing job filling your shoes, because really Mississippi was, was just loved by everybody, great, but you've really done a great job with the kids.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Curiosism for them.
Yes, I love going to the concerts.
It's just great.
Good kids, and they...
That's really what I hear.
They, they work hard for me, which I'm very grateful, not always.
Do they work harder at the MICA Messina?
They work way better. That's, that's when my fire and brimstone comes out, so, yeah, which is, you know, but they get it.
There's a time and a place.
The first, the first time around, I think they weren't expecting it, just how intense I became, because like, you know, I just expect the level to be up and higher, and no phoning it in.
Right.
And, and I think they were a little surprised by it last year, and this year they're like, oh, all right, let's get to work, and it was great, yeah, and they, so just for a little perspective, so like I said, the school's gone five times, last year, the fourth time that we went, was the highest rating in school history.
Wow.
We took a silver medal, which the school had never done before, and this year we've got another silver medal, but our score, numerical score is higher than it was last year. So we're still showing growth, but there's still that room for growth.
That's great.
So, yeah.
And so how many, how many of our kids go to this?
The entire high school band, so it was 57.
Wow.
Yep, so we got, got buses and went down to Lexington High School for the performance, and the way it works is we got there, our performance time was 4:30 PM, we arrived around 3:30, and we went and listened to another group, so that the kids can hear other bands and orchestras and what they're doing, and then we go into a warm-up room, and we kind of like find our zen and get ready for the performance, and then perform, go into the clinic. Then afterwards, there's probably about 15 minutes where we go get snacks and hang out for a few minutes, and then there's an award ceremony where they present all of the ratings, and it's presented by the MICA board, one of the band director at Lexington who's on the MICA board, so he presents it usually, so.
And is it always held in Lexington?
There's actually five or six sites around the state that all happen the same weekend, and there's different adjudicators obviously at every site, and there's probably, I think they said there was like 150 groups that participated this year around the state.
Pretty impressive being a small district.
Yeah. Would we ever host it, or would that...
We don't have the facilities for that, yeah, we would need a performance, larger performance venue, we would need a warm-up venue that's relatively close, we'd need a clinic venue, there's, there's a lot of space that's needed for that kind of situation.
We do have turf field. We're renting that out.
I don't know how that's gonna go in, you know, March, but, right.
We had a better March and we did Naperville.
Yeah, it's true, it's true, so, no.
That's great, it's really impressive, I was so happy when I got your email telling us how well you did, but I had told you, I was, happened to be with a few of the parents that evening that picked up their kids, and the kids, they said, came off the bus and they were so, really proud of themselves, you know, so just having that confidence and...
It's funny, you know, the, the kids are actually harder than, on themselves than the judges are sometimes, you know, like they'll come off and they'll be like, oh, that was terrible, that song has gone better, way better, why did we play so bad? Now, then we'll listen to the recording and be like, well, it wasn't that bad, guys, it actually went kind of okay, you know, so.
Do they have their own recordings as they're playing?
Yeah, yeah, that's exactly what's happening, yeah, that's exactly what happens. But you know, the recording process is, is very eye-opening in itself, because you know, like when you're playing, you're kind of in the moment, you're not necessarily, you can't hear from the front of the group, so by having those recordings that you can listen back to and really be critical and evaluate and improve your performance.
Yeah.
So, it's very cool.
I always love to hear about the music department and how well they're doing, and I'm really excited for tomorrow's event with the chorus.
And the band.
So, oh, the band is going to...
Band and chorus, yep, yep, so we're taking...
Tell us a little bit about that.
We're taking 150 high school-age children into Boston, and we're departing at 2:30, and we're seeing Blue Man Group at 4:30, and then we are carting them over to the Odyssey ship, boat, and we're doing a dinner dance cruise on the water for them, so it should be a lot of fun.
Yeah, that's great.
And it's kind of a, you know, a cultural event for the kids, and, and then kind of a little pat on the back, you know, the kids work hard all year, so, you know, a little thing like this.
Yeah, the kids are really excited for it, I know it's gonna be fun, I hope that the weather works out, I mean, it seems relatively, there's no like precipitation or anything, but it's gonna be a little chilly.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So from the location of Blue Man Group to the Odyssey, are you walking?
No, we're busing.
You are busing, so the buses will stay there, I wasn't sure, I'm pretty sure it's close and we walk.
Provided all goes well with the company, though, we'll be there.
Yeah, no, that's good, I hope everybody enjoys, and that you leave with 150 and you come back with 150.
We, we're actually leaving with 15 less, 135.
Athletic issues?
Who are girls, lacrosse, and then their parents are driving them to meet us for the boat.
So they'll miss the Blue Man...
So they'll miss the Blue Man Group, but they'll be there for the dinner dance cruise, so they can at least participate in that.
That was nice that you allowed them the opportunity to do that, you know, they, they have that commitment to their team, and it's, it's hard at that age to say, okay, pick one.
The biggest shout-out goes to Chris DeFranco, who is, I can't even tell you how accommodating he is to our music department, and you know, we'll kind of sit like, where I'm preparing next year's calendar right now, and we'll sit down at the end of the year and just say, okay, where are the conflicts, and you know, okay, I'll, I'll move this, can you move that, and we really have a collegial relationship and work well together, so he's been really, really wonderful as athletic director, so.
That's good, yeah, we always appreciate Chris and his, the enormous amount of time that he puts in beyond his regular...
Really does.
Yeah, absolutely.
So we do appreciate that, but again, we really appreciate all that you've done, you've done a great job, the kids sound amazing, and I'm glad that they're having so much fun, that's good.
Thank you.
Yeah, so we'd love to have another update and the next...
Well, I probably will be back, hopefully before the end of the year, because we're starting to look at a trip for next year.
Oh.
So, I don't have all the details yet, but...
So you, like in a way, like out of the state?
Out of state, yeah, I've read, Mr. Lucius has already given me the, the go-ahead, but I have to fill out the paperwork to, and you know, and then come before you guys and...
Have you talked to the students at all about it?
Yeah, I've mentioned it to the KUZ students, so we're, we're looking at Washington DC.
Incredible.
So, yeah, and...
That's a great place to...
Actually, Mr. DeFranco and Mr. Hastings are gonna team up with us with the AP Gov. and AP History to kind of tag along, but again, the details aren't, aren't settled yet, because it was, things just kind of got approved from Mr. Lucius', and now we're just looking at going forward, so.
So maybe it'll almost be like that Speak Up program that we had years ago with Mr. Hastings, when they used to go.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then it was just, when I asked him, when he was here, the last time he was here, why we didn't continue, it was just monetary reasons.
Yeah, it gets expensive, yeah.
It gets expensive and they didn't have enough.
If you guys remember the New York trip from, I guess, four years ago now almost, the cost will be right around the same amount of money, so, but the company that I've, I've been working with has been, I said, I don't want to pay more money, and he's like, all right, got it.
That's good, from four years ago, they'd be able to do that.
Yeah, yeah, so, should be, should be pretty cool.
You know, it was interesting though, how many kids reminded me that the day, April 13th, when they left last year for Disney.
Oh, for Disney, yeah, yeah, yeah.
They're like, oh, this is the day we left.
Such a memorable trip for them.
Yeah, the kids had a great time on that trip, which is awesome.
Did great too, so these are all great, you know, things leading up to the big event, where they really are asked to be very professional.
Step up on their game, yeah, yep.
So that's good.
Exciting, so, awesome, well, thank you so much for having me, appreciate it.
Thank you for taking the time, I really appreciate you coming out.
Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
You too.
Have fun tomorrow night.
Oh, thank you, we will.
Yeah, that's, that sounds great. Okay, we, I don't, we're done. Does anybody have any questions about the information that the superintendent's provided, has provided in the packet? Anything with that? No? Subcommittee reports, budget and finance, no?
Nothing.
Nope. Governance?
Well, we were supposed to meet the Friday before vacation, and then I had a family thing, and then you had something, so we need to reschedule that one.
I think you have a doodle out? No.
Not yet, no. Okay, so are we gonna make that one up that we missed?
No, we're having one May 13th, right, we can look this up, or... Okay, May 13th, that's a Friday, right?
Do you want to speak a little, you weren't at the last meeting.
Right.
So do you want to speak a little bit about the bus policy?
Sure, sure, it's, it's been a long time coming.
Yes, we got a great update, but I'd like to...
Yeah, we, what we want everyone to really know is that we really try to listen to everybody's concerns, and unfortunately, we can't help everyone with what they need. But we did come up with a few creative ideas that we are hoping might help in some cases. One idea was to have what we called a shuttle run, where one of our five buses, preferably the one with the shortest route, would start with the shuttle run, there would be two centralized stops for students who do not qualify for buses. So if their parents needed them to get on a bus, because dropping them off at 8:20 was a hardship, they could get this earlier bus, get to school, and then that bus would go back and do its regular run. So the two centralized stops would be one at Pearlie and one at the Longview Apartments, so kind of two sides of town. Again, some parents had said, well, if I'm getting my car, I may as well take my child to school.
Suzanne had said that, yeah.
But at the same time, we're hearing people who are saying, it's a hardship for us to pay for before-school care, we need to get to work at a reasonable time, so this is a creative option, since buying another bus isn't an option.
Isn't an option, right, but they were also saying that that was also an early time for them, you know, because that would be the first run, and then the bus would go and do their other run. For the kids to get there, they were saying, right, yeah. I know we did talk about, about when you gave us the update, that we were most appreciative of the creativity that you guys came up with. I mean, you had several options in there that you tried, you tried to hit the points.
Well, and we wanted, we wanted to make it to be one mile.
Right, we wanted to accommodate what we could, but...
No, it just, it just was going to add too many more students to the buses, when we already have full buses. The other thing that we were looking at was, there are a number of families who qualify for buses, who choose specifically not to ride, and we were, where it is a law, the children, grades K to 6, who are, in our policy, 1.5 miles or beyond, are guaranteed a free bus, if somebody is guaranteed a bus and they choose to like sign it, sign a waiver, signing it back to somebody perhaps in need, that was an option thrown out there.
Okay, so legally, we can do that?
According to Carol.
If they sign a waiver, saying that, my child will not ride the bus, so we're thinking those would be available seats, and then we would either have a lottery, or possibly whoever lives the furthest away would get the first option. So is that, that is for people also that don't choose to have the pass?
Well, I mean, right, so, but some people who drive their kids and pick up their kids, they may still want a bus pass, because there might be that one day, you know, and if they qualify, if they want to pick it up, it certainly is theirs, but...
Right, and so that's the thing, like that used to be like my situation, I drive my children to school, but I always got the bus pass.
Sure.
But then I'm, because, just for that time that, well, maybe I will be late.
Maybe you will.
So I no longer do that, because I know that I'm saying, okay, I use it maybe twice.
Twice, right.
So, for me, I choose not to...
To pick it up.
Take the pass.
Right.
But I live definitely much further away.
Much further away, so, right, so what would happen if, say, my child needed to take a bus home?
Do you know? Would they be able to, if, if I couldn't get there and I said, you, we need to get on the bus, would they be able to?
Well, if you didn't, hmm, not really, I shouldn't.
No.
Not with a pass.
But I think, you know, if we can communicate now that there are enough families in need of these spaces, so it's not just you giving up a seat for, you know, for questionable, not knowing what's gonna happen with that seat, you know, you'd be giving that seat to someone who really needs it.
But if you are a family who thinks, yes, I take my kids to school, I pick them up every day, but there are possibilities based on my schedule that they might, I recommend you picking up the pass, you know, more, this is more for people who, for whatever works best for their family, they don't want the child to ride the bus, maybe it's a medical reason, maybe it's...
Or they go to work early and they come home late, so the kids, after school.
Before and after-school care, so...
So how many of those people have we identified?
Well, it would have to be something presented to them.
They would self-identify.
Right, they would self-identify if they would step forward.
Did you look at the, is there a group of, of families that use the bus in the morning but not in the afternoon, or the other, like is...
Yes, yes. But it's, it's different every day.
Right.
Like it's, it's not consistently like, child A comes in the morning and he never...
For what we saw on the survey, for those that entered the survey, said that they prefer to have the child take the bus home in the afternoon, because pickup is just...
Too much.
It's too much, yes, right, so, you know, I saw that quite a bit in the survey. And what we also saw in that survey was an indication that parents were not interested in the pay option.
Right, which this would not be, this would not be a pay-for service, and so as far as sort of this waiver, we'd have to just see who might, I know for myself, I'd be willing to sign a waiver, and then if for some reason I break my leg and I can't drive, then I have to figure out another situation, and that's, is my choice.
Yeah, right, exactly.
But knowing that there are other students that would really want that space, you know, versus now, if you are needed, right, I mean, versus now, if you give up your pass, I'm not exactly sure what happens with that.
Nothing.
Nothing, because...
Nothing right now. Nothing, because there's always a chance that that person will come out and say, well, I qualify for a bus and I need the pass, I mean, they could pick up the pass at any time during the year.
So if we did this, then come, I don't know, August or September, we might have a number of available... Families who would be willing to give over a pass, and then we would, like you said, we either lottery it off, or we find students that live the furthest away, and so there would be a process to make use of that space.
Right.
Whereas right now, there's really no process to make use of that space.
Right.
Was there the K to 6, K to 6 one mile, is that the, the legal mandatory?
It's two miles.
Oh, sorry, two miles, yeah, I always get it backwards.
Right.
Can they, I get the ones that are, that don't follow K to 6, two miles, can waiver their seats away, can we, can the K to 6, two miles waive their seats? Because it would seem to me that they're still guaranteed, even if they've said, I'm not gonna take it, we're suddenly not providing a seat to a student who is legally eligible. I just wonder if like, if you're waiving, so you're talking about waiving, you're talking about waiving not those.
Yeah, no, we're talking about waiving those, yes.
Well, and that's...
We just need to make sure that that's...
Right.
Totally legal.
Totally, yeah.
Because Carol seemed to feel like it was, and that we should definitely make sure before we do anything.
Versus just not picking up your bus pass, that's one thing.
Because you're still, legally, it's still yours.
Right, it's acknowledging, I am aware that I'm qualified for a bus pass, I am choosing to give up my spot, you know, willingly and able and whatever, you know, whatever.
Free will. Free will.
Right, and you could do it for each year. So maybe this year, I don't want my child to, yeah. And I sign away, but maybe next year.
It's yearly, it's not just.
You know, something like that.
It's not permanent.
And I don't know if people would sign or not, you know, we don't know.
You know, some people like the safety net of knowing that it's always there if they need it, but others might recognize that there is a need that other people would use it.
And for that small amount of time that I may need it, I can come up with alternatives.
But the other thing, and you may have talked about this, is the picture ID student bus pass. Because I know over at Penbrook, they were kind of taking tally of who was getting on the bus for a safety, in case there was a bus accident or something. But they were finding that students were getting on the bus who didn't belong on the bus. So there was, you know, people who didn't have passes that were just riding anyway. So we feel that this picture student ID will help make sure the kids who are supposed to be on the bus are on the bus.
And it should also have the bus number.
Right.
Yeah, it sounds like Cindy from North Reading Transportation, when we talked to her at a safety meeting, it sounds to me like most of the other districts have the picture ID. So she was like, yeah, you definitely need it. So we thought, all right, let's at least start the tally, because, right, if there's a bus accident, like that one that happened just a few months back, I mean, they had to have the kids write in, you know, the little squares when they were given the, the picture of the bus, you know, and you couldn't even read that. So, yeah, that's definitely a concern, you know. So I think the pictures is definitely the way to go.
No matter, no matter what, for safety, if nothing else. But we do want people to realize that we understand their hardships and difficulties, and we really want to help you the best that we can. But this is what is, what we have resources for at this time. And hopefully, this will work for some folks. I know there were other concerns about bus stops and, like overcrowding on the buses. And I think some of that has been rectified since the community forum meeting.
Yeah, I think so, from the sounds of it, through the safety meetings. You went to the last one, but Cindy, it seems to be under control. And I, Barry Belanger hasn't mentioned anything, so that's great. But the beginning of the year is always tough for the buses. We always have bus issues, you know.
And then throw in a new school, the grade configuration.
And a new procedure for how those buses come and go.
And a new time for drop-off.
Right, yeah, yeah. But I do think you're right, Cheryl, and Suzanne too, for saying that we try to take everybody's issue. I mean, every, it, it is difficult, getting your kids to school is difficult. And we wanted to help as many as we can, but budgetary constraints, you know, and we're not the only district like that, because I've heard through the Start School Later movement, how many districts are, you know, held because of that transportation cost. It's so expensive.
Yeah, so.
You spent a lot of time on it, both of you, so I appreciate that.
Thank you. So that was pretty much what we came up with.
Yeah, the survey was interesting, though. I enjoyed taking a look at it and seeing.
Yeah, different perspectives.
I'm still thrilled that that many people took the time to fill out this survey, you know. I was, I was very happy with the numbers there.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. Negotiations, you probably haven't met, because everything's.
Everything should be.
Everything's good, good, yep. Public relations?
We're going to meet.
We're going to meet. Laura is going to send us a little doodle. The last time we met was March 3rd. And we will be discussing the measures of excellence and seeing if we can bring a number of different, you know, measures from the district satisfaction survey and items from DESI. And there's new measures that the state is trying to put together, some kind of survey or something. And we're going to try to put something together to, to make it easier for people in the community to look at, oh, and look at our school district and say, well, this is what they're doing. And so they're doing, you know, this is how we know that we have a really good, high-quality education, educational system going on here, or not, or whatever they, you know, choose to, to see. But they'll have clear-cut measures to make their observations by.
Okay, so do you have a meeting planned?
No, there's going to be a doodle.
So March 3rd.
I mean, you can do that now by going to DESI and looking up a lot of things. But we thought we'd come up with something a little more customized to reflect what's actually going on here in Georgetown.
Okay, safety hasn't met again since the last update. Latest start time, did have a meeting on Monday, I was not able to attend. But I do want to tell the public that the parent community forum that was originally scheduled to be combined with the PTA general membership meeting for May 24th had to be changed. We're changing it to Monday, May 23rd. We hope people come out, bring their concerns, questions. It will be, Laura, is it going to be in the middle high school? Okay, the middle high school at 7:00 PM on Monday, May 23rd. The Start School Later Committee will be there. We will have a presentation for the audience that Mary Lyon has put together. We will have our school physician, Dr. Medwit, on hand to answer any medical questions that come up. We hope as many people can attend, staff of the schools as well.
So that will not be the PTA meeting, it'll be separate?
Well, so the, I have tried to get in touch with Jill to see if, because the conflict is a school event. There's a concert, I guess, now on the 24th. So we figured that would be a majority of our audience that we would like to attend. So I'm not sure if she's planning on making the change, because a lot of her audience may be in the elementary. But again, I haven't heard back from her. So as it stands right now, May 24th is still the PTA meeting.
Okay, so the 23rd at the high school at 7:00 PM?
Yes. The superintendent's evaluation committee?
We haven't, we haven't met since we presented the goals.
You know, I mean, we came up with the, the performance goals, and I believe we all approved them. And so now they're just incorporated into the evaluation process, which will move forward as before.
Okay, Baker Adams, I like seeing it online, I checked it out today.
We are getting responses.
That's great. How many, how many do we have?
I don't know.
Because it was April 22nd, is that the opening day?
It was last Monday, I guess, whatever it was. So, but yeah, we got a few cut it right away.
Yeah, great.
It's good, yeah.
Okay, I'm looking forward to that experience. School building committee?
We have not had a school building committee, I think, since our last school committee meeting. So that will be the first Tuesday of next month.
And what about a CPAC?
I mean, the second Tuesday of next month.
CPAC is coming up?
CPAC is on May 11th, and.
That's a Wednesday.
Wednesday. It's a Wednesday. It'll be nine o'clock, yep, at the Penbrook School.
Has anyone come forward?
Well, actually, I had a call today, yeah.
Oh, good, someone interested.
Interested, and I believe Dr. Straight has found a couple of people who may be interested in taking on the chair. Yeah, and the position, so CPAC, so that would be great.
Yeah, that would be really good.
So the topic Monday, at May 11th, is the future of Georgetown CPAC and how we're going to carry forward.
Okay, good. Where is that? It's at Penbrook, but where do you have it? Do you have it in the library?
I, I believe it's in the conference room, that little conference room.
Oh, right off the front, the main office, okay.
If not, I'm sure, you know, people at the front desk will know.
Okay, superintendent's evaluation.
Did you just want me to speak a little bit about the day in the hill as a subcommittee topic, sort of? The day in the hill?
No, I'll get, yeah, I already, I was thinking of it under new business.
Got it.
We'll do that. The superintendent's evaluation. So we have the template in here that we've used. I'm sure you've all had an opportunity to take a look at it. The five goals that we approved are on here. And it's going to be a busy couple of weeks, because you're going to have to schedule the meeting with the superintendent. I know I did, I scheduled mine today, thank you for sending that out. You already did it? Oh, good. So that will be a busy time. But it's always, it's always good. Does anyone have any questions about it, about the template or anything? Oh, good, okay, thank you. Thank you. So I, I like to do it hand first, you know, like paper first, and then I input them, but thank you. The school committee self-evaluation, that, we're a little behind on that. I think our budget issues had taken priority. And so the two of you have never experienced this? Okay, so I'm sure when you, when you saw it, you were most likely like, what? It is definitely, I feel it to be a great experience, but I remember when it first came up, I'm like, what do you mean? What do, what do I get to do? And it was a little intimidating, but now I think realizing that the goal is to make sure that we're all just working together as best as we can. We're cohesive, there's no, you know, issues that amongst ourselves that are preventing us from doing the best job that we can as school committee members.
An opportunity to have a conversation, and we will be discussing this in, in open meeting. You know, any, any functional issues especially that are on our mind about the, the way we conduct business, or, you know, our priorities, or our communication, our style of communication, anything that could be improved. Because we always want to have the spirit of, of continuous improvement and be aware of how we're all, you know, working together and our individual perceptions. And it's just, I think it's good to keep it out on the table.
Right, no, it's always a good conversation. The only change that I am going to propose to make on the timeline is to have the completed evaluation forms to me, and then the compilation of the evaluation data for May 8th instead of May 6th.
Both of them?
Does that work for everybody? It actually gives people a little more time. So if we could just change that, Laurie, is that good for you?
Is there an online option for this one, or is?
I can email it to you.
Just like a PDF, like a.
It's easier to type into, but.
Yeah, we have.
You can do a fill-in PDF.
Yeah, we did that in the past, yeah.
And then I, then you can compile the data with your great Excel spreadsheet, right, that will give all the, the mathematical mumbo jumbo that needs to be done.
The mathematical mumbo jumbo.
I think anything mathematical is mumbo jumbo, unfortunately. Okay, so I will make a motion to approve the school committee self-evaluation process timeline with the date for the complete evaluation forms and the compilation of the evaluation data to be May 8th, 2016, in place of May 6th, 2016. So moved. Questions, comments, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we do have to schedule the Baker Adams meeting. And what we've found, I've always found with the Baker Adams is that we never have enough time, right?
Yeah.
We've had to always plan another. So as we're looking at our calendar, we want to be mindful of the, of the, of the date that we pick, thinking that most likely we're going to need maybe a second date. So we have, we received the applications on May 16th. And then by May 27th, we need to have those officially recorded with Laura.
The good news is there's going to be less lead time, because Laura's going to have to do less redacting. I mean, it can almost be, I don't want to say instantly, but pretty much instantly.
Laura, you must be happy about that, because I know it's a lot of work, I know. So who wants to start throwing out dates?
How about May 19th, Thursday?
That's funny, that's the first date I picked out, too.
What time?
I can't.
Okay.
Well, wait a minute, what time were you?
Like a.
If it doesn't work for you, don't, it's fine.
That one should be soon.
I could meet at seven.
No, that would be really, that's a very good point, that's three days to get through.
Oh, right.
All right, how about, how about the 23rd, Monday?
That's the Start School Later Forum. That week is crazy, because then the 24th is a chorus concert. 26th is a school committee meeting, we could meet prior to the school committee meeting.
25th?
At six, on the 26th.
What about the 25th?
I cannot be there.
They'll have an executive session potentially that night.
The 26th of May? Oh, so, and we want to do it before? We want to do the executive session before the meeting?
Right, you'll be doing, you'll be starting at 6:15, most likely that night, as it's down to it now.
Okay, is this aside from the May 12th?
May 12th is now.
Oh, May 12th is canceled, okay.
We're working on it, May 12th.
Okay. Is that reset?
What about May 24th? Is that impossible for you?
Yeah, because that's the chorus.
Because that's the chorus, of course.
That's definitely not available.
What about the 25th?
It's a Wednesday. It does not work for me, well, depends on what time. I could do it at 8:00.
Well, why don't we, why don't we do a doodle? Because this is, this is thrilling television right now.
Okay, okay. I mean, but we're all here.
Well, I know.
But I know, yes.
Carol needs to be there, too? So a doodle would probably be best, when she's available, too.
Okay, thank you, we can do that. So we will not, okay, so we'll hold off on that, that's going to be tough. Especially, I mean, we can't even plan the first meeting, let's hope that.
I know, we'll aim for a marathon on the first and.
If you wanted to go back to that date, which was the 16th, I believe, I'll just.
Well, the 19th, but it doesn't give us enough time. Only gives us three days, that would be crazy to get through 30 applications, because this is your first, you did it last year. So this is your first, that would be way too much.
Could we review the completed ones before?
The deadline?
The deadline? And there will be a glut, certainly at 3:59 PM, or whatever the, I forget what the exact time is, but.
I don't know what that, if we can, we can talk about that, if we have like, you know.
If you have access to read them now.
Yeah.
It was May 9th, did anybody throw that in?
That's before they're.
Yeah, they're not due until the 16th.
What about the 22nd, a Sunday?
Yeah, I'm, I'm good with that.
I won't be here.
I'm not good for a 22nd, for a Sunday.
You're not good with that?
No.
For a Saturday?
No, no.
Okay.
Okay, yeah.
Sorry. All right, we'll figure it out.
We just.
We'll doodle.
Doodle will be good.
Okay, well, so, so are you the executor of the, of the?
Yes, I'll be working with Laura, too.
So if we could get them ahead of time, like as they're coming in?
We could, yeah, I would, I would probably do like batches of five or whatever, instead of a one-off thing. But yeah, I don't see why we couldn't do that. Logistically, we can, just it's a practical sense, but yeah.
Okay, that, that's a good, I'm glad you, you've thought of that. Okay, so we'll have the doodle go out and we'll talk about. The, we have, under new business, we have acceptance of a middle school donation. That lip sync battle was very profitable and a lot of fun. I've heard so many people talk about it. So half of the funds are being donated to Feed the Children. The remainder will be donated to the Middle School Recognition Program. So I will make a motion to accept the $1,084 donation to be shared equally between the Middle School Recognition Program and the Feed the Children charity.
So moved.
Second, discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
That's, that was a nice event, I hope they continue to do that, because it's a great way for the kids to see the teachers outside of their normal day. We have to approve the last day of school, based on the three snow days that we had. We will have. We will have our last day of school on Tuesday, June 21st, and it will be a half day. So the chair will make a motion to approve Tuesday, June 21st, 2016, as the last day of school, which will be a half day for the 2015-2016 school year.
So moved.
You choose.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
So, so graduation is still June 4th?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, and let's hope...
So that didn't throw that out?
Beautiful day.
Yes.
I know, that's going to be a nice day. So now we have PM attended a Day on the Hill on Tuesday.
Yes, yes.
Which I wish the weather was better for you.
I know.
It was cold and rainy.
It was cold and rainy, people were walking through Boston with, like, winter jackets and their hoods up, and it was...
Windy and cold.
Yeah.
So it sounded, thank you for the...
But it was still a wonderful, wonderful day.
She gave me a great synopsis of the day, so why don't you fill us in on how things went?
Sure, sure. Well, a Day on the Hill is an event organized by MASC, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, to bring school committee members and their superintendents together to listen to our state senators and state representatives that are very involved in the, you know, the laws that, they're trying to pass laws to, to help school districts and education throughout the Commonwealth. Of course, I went down there intent, my main purpose was to, you know, advocate to our Senator Bruce Tar and Representative Mira about, to try to update and change the Chapter 70 formula, which is especially inaccurate at this time concerning special education costs and health insurance premiums. I was not able to meet with Senator Mira, but, I mean, Representative Mira, but I did see Senator Tar, who is absolutely, he's just so wonderful and gracious and excellent listener, and, you know, he really, he was very encouraging and very appreciative of the fact that, you know, he, he needs our communication, he wants our communication, because our legislators, really, they don't want to operate in a vacuum, you know, they want to, to hear from all of us, their constituents, about what, what we need from the state, how the state can best, best support us. As I think I've, I've talked about Chapter 70 before, it was, it was established in 1993, and there have been many changes recommended since that time, but none of them have actually been implemented. So I was looking for somebody to really, you know, help me feel good about the fact that real progress is going to take place. So they sat us all down, and, you know, in Rome, and we listened to, let's say, we had all these different speakers, we had Education Committee Co-Chair Representative Alice Pash, she was great, she was, informed us about the, there are two ballot questions for the November ballot, the state ballot. One is to allow the state to permit additional 12 charter schools per year, it's called an Act to Allow Fair Access to Public Charter Schools. There's a lot of controversy around charter schools.
Yes, there is.
And Auditor Suzanne Bump, State Auditor Suzanne Bump was also there, she has called for a lot more transparency in their financial statements, in particular, up to this point, it's been very difficult. It's not the same reporting requirements as for public schools, so, you know, it's, the public needs to know, they deserve to know what's going on, this is open government here, these are open meetings, we have open financial statements, so charter schools need to do that. Also, there's a, if a charter school, let's see, if there's somebody who wants a charter school to be in a certain community, they just need to get, right now, the state's permission, they don't need to get the local residents, the voters, their permission. And yet, all the property taxes that, you know, fund the charter school, so there's legislation going through to, if the local, if the local residents do not support, do not vote to support a new charter school, that the state should or would cover the cost of the charter school then. I mean, it's a different story if the community wants the charter school, and has, charter schools often go into communities with a lot of underserved students, larger, you know, urban environments, it's not really a Georgetown issue, but, okay. The other ballot question is to change the 2010 academic standards, it's an initiative petition for a law relative to ending common core educational standards. Representative Alice Pash said emphatically that this would set education back six years, and so she was very negative about this particular ballot question. We also, we heard Senator Sonia Chang Diaz, who is very young and energetic, and she, you know, she, she talked, they talk about, you know, preparing young men and women to be leaders of tomorrow, and she wants to help teachers and students to reach their full potential, and she was, she was wonderful. Senator Ann Goby spoke, she accepted the 2015 MASC Legislator of the Year Award, so I'm not exactly sure what she did to deserve that, but I'm sure it was something really, I mean, there's a lot of, of hardworking, dedicated legislators to pick from, so I'm sure it must have been something quite significant. Then, so then State Auditor Suzanne Bump spoke, she talked about the, she has been helping to conduct municipal impact studies to show the effects of the underfunding of Chapter 70 to communities, and they basically fall into four categories, she says, the, you know, the employee benefits, the health insurance, what our plans are able to provide for employees is very little, because the cost is going up so incredibly fast, public safety gets impacted, because, you know, when money does not come into the local towns, it's not just the school budget that gets cut, it's all the public safety as well, the town clerk, interesting, she, one of the areas is the town clerk, and a town's ability to, you know, to count votes, and the voting machines and all that, I mean, that's really important, if you don't have a reliable voting mechanism in a town, you know, we don't want any hanging chads around here, but, so, but a lot of towns in Massachusetts are, are under strain that way. And of course, the public schools, because the Chapter 70 formula as it is now restricts our ability to, you know, to provide college and career readiness programs, to prepare our students for the world. I was very impressed with Pat Murphy, now, Pat Murphy is the MASC, which is again, for people in the audience who don't know, the Massachusetts Association of School Committee, he's the president-elect, so he sounds like the, the person who's going to become the president. In any case, so these are the things, and I, I'm just going to go through them, because they are important, if you think about them, they're, the MASC works very, very hard to advocate for all of our school districts in the legislature, I mean, I think they live there. And their office is like just a couple streets down. So this is what they're trying to get from the state. They want the state to add $100 per student with the ultimate, the budget. At the moment, the governor has recommended adding 20, and the House Ways and Means has recommended adding 55, but MASC is going for 100. They want the state circuit breaker to stay 100% funded, meaning 75% of tuition over $45,000 for special education students would be funded by the state, and that's something I told Senator Tar, too, that that's very important to us, we need that to happen. MASC wants local approval to be required for charter schools, I talked about that before. They want a moratorium on all new DESI regulations not required by law, I think the Superintendent's Association has been, you know, talking about the fact that there are just so many new regulations that come down that create endless paperwork, and it's very difficult for everyone. So I mean, the bare basics, you know, if something was absolutely necessary, that's, that's probably, that's an important thing, but nothing beyond that. MASC does, do not give DESI power to force regionalization, there's concern in smaller districts, of which we are one, that there may be situations where DESI would, you know, really would force us to do something that we weren't entirely comfortable with, so. They, and interestingly, I thought, they want to restore to school committees the power to approve school improvement plans. Right now, we hear them, apparently we do not...
Yeah, we do not make a vote.
Approve them, and that's a matter of law, so MASC wants to change that. And then, when students qualify for Medicaid coverage within their IEP plans, apparently the money now goes to the towns, and MASC wants the money to go to the schools.
Right.
Which is the towns. So I was most impressed with everybody that I heard speak there, with Senate Ways and Means Chair, Senator Karen Spilka, she was the one, she's a former Ashland School Committee member, and she's the one that really gave me the confidence that there's going to be some meaningful change, along with this Foundation Budget Review Committee going forward, and, you know, maybe not this year, although they're working hard, but, you know, over the next five years. She said, you know, she's working to implement the recommendation, she's, let's see, she really wanted to thank all the community boards in the towns across the Commonwealth, and over 100 towns that have supported the Suburban Coalition. She says, "When we build stronger, more resilient schools, we create stronger, more resilient students," which is certainly true, that is our, our goal. And the, a path toward future success is started early in life, so she's all for investing in early childhood education. So, and the food, I, I mean, I'm telling people I would love, love to have some company at this event next year, this is my first year going, I went because, you know, the Georgetown is only getting 0.66% increase, and this is like the worst situation, you know, we've, we've ever had, and it just got me to think, I need to go, I need to speak up. It was a joy, it was really an amazing experience to watch our legislators in action, actually create, I mean, creating laws. It's one thing to see this happen on the news, and occasionally you'll see a little flash of, of the House floor or something, it's another thing to just go down and, and watch them talk and watch the whole thing, it was very, very inspiring. So I'm sure I will have company next year, but the food alone, if you are a foodie person, and it's really important to you, the lunch was provided by vocational students from across the state, and they just, they had, you know, all this, while we were in line, because it was a very, I have to show you the pictures, but I can't, I'll do that after the meeting. But while we were in line, they, they came around and they served seafood chowder that had lobster in it, in these little bowls to everybody, and the smell, it was so wonderful, it wafted all through the state house, and it was, I don't know, anyway, but, but they had, you know, beef, and seafood, and vegetables, and salads, and the desserts were to die for, it was just, and, and the students were so proud of their, their food, I've, I was just amazed. So I highly recommend the experience next year. And so I just wanted to tell you one more thing, so then Bruce, Senator Bruce Tar's office told me that he didn't have time to see me, but that they offered me to, you know, a meeting for me to come up and speak with his legal aides anyway, so I said, sure, I'll go up, I'll talk with anyone, I'm always happy to do that. But he was actually there, and he gave me quite a bit of time, and he's, he's just wonderful. So I met with him and his, his team. So I, I just, I mentioned that we're only getting, you know, 66% increase in Chapter 70 for about $35,000, I think it's actually less than that, that we operate as a district compared to other districts around us, very close to the minimum required net school spending. The required net school spending is the sum of Chapter 78 and the state's required contribution from our town, which they do exceed it slightly, but if you look at, if you compare it to other towns, we're, we're, we're too close for comfort. So, you know, and our budget this year is going to require us, you know, we, we have to eliminate 8.5 full-time equivalents, 3.8 of those are, are teachers, you know, I, I tried, I tried to make clear that our administration does understand the need for those cuts to correlate with grade level dips in our enrollment, in order to minimize the educational impact, and that I, I believe we've done that, you know, very well to the best of our ability, but I'm looking forward into the future, and I, you know, I think we are going to get some, it's sounding positive that we will have some help from the state, or hopefully, coming forward. You know, I, I just, the, the Chapter 70 formula has to reflect the growing number of, of special education students. You know, I, I don't think that children, per se, are, are changing, I think our ability to diagnose disabilities and our ability to, to help them is, is increasing, which is a good thing for students, but we also need the funding to be able to do that properly, the, the right way. So, you know, we, we need money to provide early intervention to struggling students, we do have a response to intervention RTI program in place, but we need to be able to fund the interventions that that, that entails. We need to hire more interventionalists, circuit breaker, and I think, I guess that's, I guess that's it, yeah.
Well, that's good, I'm glad you actually had an opportunity to meet with him.
Yeah.
You know, because he is always so gracious.
He is, he's...
He's, he's actually...
Very caring.
Yeah.
You know, he, he really wants to do everything he can possibly do to, to help, and...
And I'm sure what you told him isn't new to him, either, I'm sure many of the...
But I think it's important, even though he knows it, I still think it's important that he hears it from, from people, and he hears that it's still, it's, it's still happening, and it's going to be happening next year unless something changes.
Right.
Which is possible, I do believe in positive change, you know, I, I am optimistic, but they need to understand how important it is to, to us that we're properly funded, and that that formula reflects current, current costs. I also mentioned healthcare insurance, too, and premiums, I mean, I don't really know a whole lot about that area, but it seems to me that some kind of regulation of the insurance companies, there has to be something, because it's, it's really, I mean, it's a big part of our problem, that's a big part of our problem.
Even like 17, it was crazy, they said they get you in there, and then the next year they end up, you know. But you know, the old-fashioned way of writing your representative's letters does really work.
It's hilarious.
And they, they, in order to know the obstacles that we as a community are facing, they need to hear from the constituents, so it is so important to do that, and I know a few times during our meetings, we have asked people to do that, you know, during the whole budget process, so.
And they're very open to hearing from us, I think they really want to.
So how many people, how many districts now are involved in the Suburban Coalition? Do you know?
About 100.
Wow.
Out of like 300 and...
But it's grown quite a bit.
And, yeah, and I mean, I wouldn't be surprised if like, you know, in a few weeks, it's...
It's even more.
It's continuing to grow.
So we, we have had the paperwork from the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen, as well as our board?
That's what I understand.
Forwarded to them?
Yes.
That's great.
Yes. Yeah, I'm very proud of our community for, you know, rallying to do that.
Well, I'm happy that you all work together, the different boards.
Because it is, you know, at this point, only one out of three communities, it's not so, we should be proud of ourselves and of, of all of, you know, the committees here for, for doing that.
That's good, well, I'm glad you enjoyed the day, and they do that every year.
Do it every year.
And we, we always have ample time provided in order to schedule that day, I would have loved to have gone, too.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it was very exciting, it was very, it was one, and just everyone was so courteous and polite, and you know, other, especially the Winchendon School Committee, they really pulled me in right from the start, their whole committee and superintendent was there, and then Penn Tucket, you know, some people from the Penn Tucket School Committee came and invited me to sit with them for, for lunch, people from the Amesbury School Committee came and invited me, and they're the ones that showed me the house, where the house was, they were all going there, it's like, I wouldn't necessarily have known to go there, but I just, you know, they put me under their wing, and it was, it was great.
Well, that's good. Well, we appreciate you taking the day to go in and do that, because that is a lot. I mean, what time did you end up getting home?
The hardest part was parking.
Yeah, I'm sure.
That was, that was the only part, I was like, oh, no!
No.
No, the train is more expensive and takes more time. I mean, if you add it all up...
I usually take the subway. So when I say the train, I take...
No, but, but you have to park in Newburyport, take the train to Newburyport, and take the T.
But if you take the subway, it's cheaper.
T.
Yeah, if you...
But you have to take the T in addition to the train, the purple line from Newburyport.
Right, but I'm saying, remove that purple line and just drive to the T.
She means to go to like Melrose, Melrose, and just take the T.
That's what I do, and just take the train, so it's like $6 to park and...
$2.65, okay.
Right.
Well, I, yeah, sorry, I wasn't, you know, Newburyport is, is closing, let me tell you, from Newburyport, it's hard to park during the day.
Yeah.
There, I mean, it's... Well, I, I found, I found a place that was, you know, it was only 20, I could reserve it ahead of time, because I didn't know what times they, the other lots fill up, and if they filled up, then I would have to, I don't know what I would do, so, but I was able to find a place.
You'd find a place, you might just have to walk a little way.
It all worked out, it all worked out, and I'll probably do it the same way next.
That's good. That's great. Thank you again for taking the time to do that. So what time did you get home? How late of the day was it for you?
Oh, maybe like 4:00.
And you left early in the morning?
Well, yeah, I left like around...